Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's review the minutes of the previous meeting. And the additions or deletions.
No, they look good to me. I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that the minutes be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Applications from public hearing, this first one is special exception for 540 Daniel Webster Highway. Is the applicant here? Or whoever's going to speak for the applicant, come forward.
You should have an appearance on file by me for George Kirk. My name is Jim Steiner. I'm an attorney from Concord, New Hampshire, and I'm pleased to appear on behalf of George Kirk.
Before you get started, sir.
Oh, yes.
As you can see, there's only three of us here tonight.
Sure.
You have the right, if you want to, to say, let's delay this until next meeting if you want to have more members on the board.
I would. I think we're fine to proceed with the folks who are present here. I mean, you folks battled the snow and ice to get down here, so.
Hey, I got a question. Is there any conflict of interest between any of us board members sitting up here?
I didn't look up anything. I don't, I certainly don't know of any conflict of interest.
Okay, you can just ask your client.
Not that I would.
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Go right ahead, sir. If you'd explain what the application is about.
Sure.
We'll hear from you. I don't know whether other people want to speak in favor.
Understood.
There may be some people who want to speak against. That's during the public session. Then the board may have questions of you as well.
Understood.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
So as I said, I mean, there has been some conflict over the years, and while I'm limiting my discussion to this particular parcel, as you know, there are separate applications for the other two parcels. And George and the town, we met and worked out a stipulation because the town indicated that while George can continue his towing and sales operation just the way it is, the town would like to have some affirmative controls in place, in particular, so the population of cars doesn't grow out of hand. And so you have the stipulation that the town entered into with George, which limits the number of vehicles per lot. And so the special exception approval, limited to vehicles only for a junkyard, because as you know, the statute governing junkyards can be far more expansive than vehicles. But George and the town agree that this would be limited solely to vehicles.
I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. The stipulation that was approved by the court, it's ambiguous on that question. Maybe you can clarify that, sir.
Sure. Ambiguous on?
If you look at the stipulation that was entered into, sir, it became a court decree. Find my copy of it. There's a line that says, I'll have to go back here. What the number will be.
Correct.
And the number says 250 automobiles at each site.
No, no, not at each site.
It's what it says, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, let me clarify that, and you can certainly, in approving the special exception, indicate that as is contained in the memo that was submitted and is spelled out in that memo, it is 250 vehicles total with a certain limitation as per each of the three sites. Of 75, 75, and 100.
You do see the wording, though, that's which is contrary to that.
You are correct.
And that's 75 for the first application, 75 for the second.
And 100 for the third.
And 100 for the third.
Right. And that was based on representatives of the town inspecting each of the three parcels. And in conjunction with talking with George to understand the process, which I also outlined in the memo. I mean, we are here largely because of the inefficiency in the system at the Department of Motor Vehicles, which was bad before COVID, has become its own hemorrhaged kind of process. You know, Kirk's towing tows a lot of student vehicles and obviously accident vehicles and DUI vehicles around town. And as I outlined and cited you to the statutes, it is an onerous procedure to go through as to each individual car to have the state say, yes, Mr. Kirk, you may now dispose of that car by having it shipped off somewhere, or you may sell it. And what should be mere weeks is now taking in excess of three months per vehicle. In fact, George shared with me, they sold a car, not an accident car or anything that was towed. They sold a car. And the owner is outraged because it's the same office at the DMV that issues the title for the vehicle that's been sold. It was sold three months ago. So unfortunately, and no title has been sent. Of course, once, you know, George sends in the application, it's beyond his ability to influence what happens. And somebody at the state told this individual who, you know, just kept calling, kind of pecking at it, and said, yes, sir, I see your application. It's not in the current lot to be processed. And we can't do anything about that for you. The accident tows are more complex because with those, first you have to find out who is the owner of the vehicle, and then you have to contact them and their insurance company to see if the insurance company wants to take ownership of the vehicle. And then you have to go through this application process with notice to the last listed owner before the state can say, yes, Mr. Kirk, if this is a junker, you may dispose of it now. But until then, he has a legal duty, once he's towed it in, to hold on to it until the state clears him. So that has caused the population of vehicles to grow, quite frankly, and particularly over the last four years. And so, again, George sat down with the town and said, I understand you want to see less vehicles there. I'd like to see less vehicles there because I don't make any money unless I move these things on to third parties. And so the town said, you know, you have the authority to tow and to sell vehicles, but we'd like to have a little bit more affirmative control so that we can supervise what goes on. And I think it was the town who suggested, I think you should apply for a special exception, junkyard, limited to vehicles only, and let's agree on the number per lot, and this particular lot being the one that's in front of you, so that the town now has affirmative, an affirmative ability to have input on what happens. You know, if you didn't have George Kirk in town, you'd have vehicles that would be, you know, they'd overwhelm the police department. They'd overwhelm other locations. So what Kirk's towing does is it provides a necessary service to the town to keep these vehicles off of side streets, off of, you know, off of the roadways, certainly off the highways. And your colleagues at the town have agreed, this makes sense. I can run through each of the provisions of the special exception if you'd like. I mean, they are certainly listed specifically in the application. I don't want to insult you folks by doing that where I'm sure you've read it and you're quite familiar.
I think, sir, it's your show to determine.
All right. So, you know, just kind of addressing then in broad terms. So in addition to vehicle sales and repair and the towing that is done, this is a compromise between the town and Kirk's towing to seek this special exception, limited to vehicles only and limited to the number of vehicles, and thank you for pointing out what is vague in the settlement agreement, limited to the number of vehicles per lot that have been identified by the town as an agreeable number. Most of these are accident tows, abandoned car tows, and you're a university town. You get a lot of abandoned cars here from students and DUI tows, among others. This protects the town from being able to supervise this process, which is a helpful step to take. So looking at the criteria, you know, how the specific site is an appropriate location. Well, it continues, there's no change to the fact that it continues to be a site where towed cars have been stored, repair, sales and repair of used cars have been conducted. But the difference is that there would now be, by special exception, a specific cap on any given number of vehicles on any specific lot. How does the use is developed or explain how the use will not adversely affect the character of the area. Well, it won't adversely affect the character of the area as it does in fact continue to be used in the same way it has been, subject to the conditions that this zoning board imposes on the special exception, including the two that I've mentioned. Thank you again, Mr. Kent, for noting what is not specified in the stipulation to the court, but is specified in the application for special exception. How there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrian. There has been no existing nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles. Vehicles are kept in their remote locations. They're really not in the line of area where pedestrians walk or where vehicular traffic travels. The access to the vehicles is limited to tow trucks because these are not vehicles that move under their own power. How the use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services. There will be no increase in any use of town services or facilities by granting the special exception. I think I've repeated more than enough times, the theme of this was to provide the town with the ability to supervise more actively what goes on in terms of vehicle storage and vehicle processing. Lastly, explain how there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare. Well, in fact, this special exception enhances safety and general welfare because it takes control of vehicles that otherwise would be left along roads and other locations. It consolidates them, and in the process that Kirk's towing has to follow with the state, it provides for the removal of these vehicles from the town of Plymouth. You know, if the State Department of Motor Vehicles doubled the number of hires that they have to process these vehicles, you could see as few as 50 cars or less on these locations because that is the hang-up. That is the reason that there are cars there to begin with. It's, you know, if George could press a button and file the application, and the state turned around and pressed the button and said, Kirk's towing, you are free to get rid of these five or these 10 cars. It's just not the way it is working and nor has it worked for years because they are undermanned. But if that did change for some reason, the population of cars would drop dramatically because it's based on the processing that is done. Let me just, you know, some other considerations regarding, you know, employees coming and going to work. Well, no change. Two of the lots don't have employees that work on site. The only folks that work on site are the folks that work for Kirk's Tire. And, you know, they continue to come and go to work just as they have, so there's no change to that. There's no change to any signage. Customers only come to the Tenny Mountain Highway address where the office is located. If an insurance company says, we'll take a vehicle, it's one of George Kirk's tow drivers who go out to retrieve the vehicle from one of the remote lots to either bring it to Tenny Mountain Highway or to drive it to a disposal location. Most of these are in Massachusetts. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm happy to have George answer any questions you might have. But certainly the theme of this is the town said it'd be nice for us to have more affirmative control, you know, over the vehicles that do end up getting towed and, you know, the town would be free to come in and check. Well, how about that one? How long has that one been here and what's the state of it? And George would be able to tell you. Here's the state of these vehicles. I can tell you which ones we applied for three months ago or more. I can tell you which ones we applied for last week. So again, it provides the town with an affirmative control that it has not had previously.
Thank you. Any questions by board member?
I was going to ask, isn't that a little bit of a service, right? Like, when you say down here, we're not going to place any excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities. And while we typically think about that as like water and sewer, plowing and roads, isn't having to maintain and go in and check up on how he's running his business, isn't that a little bit of a service that the town is having to manage?
That's a discretionary service that if the, you know, if the town just, you know, somebody in the town drives by and looks and says, yep, looking fine, then there's, you know, no need for any further inquiry. But this allows the town to conduct that at their discretion, so it's not a required kind of service. It's if somebody said to the town, looking a little crowded out there. Has anybody counted those cars to make sure they're in compliance? Then.
Then they would have to go.
Then they would, yes.
Probably.
Let's talk a little about compliance.
Okay.
They had a planning board approval 20 years ago.
Correct.
Isn't it true that they have never been in compliance with what the planning board ruled?
Well, I think that the answer to that is.
Simple.
Well, no, I mean, George has answered complaints from the planning board to bring it into compliance, and this overall resolution was part of addressing.
Over the last 20 years, has it been in compliance?
I think the answer is yes.
It has?
Yes.
Are you certain of that, sir?
I am.
What would not be in compliance?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, and in dealing with the town's attorney, yes, there were disputes over compliance and degrees of compliance. But the reason we were going to mediation to try to resolve this is because George maintained that he had taken the steps that were necessary, and the town said, you have taken steps. And I think that's why, I think that the town looked at the steps that were taken and said, there's a demonstration of good faith here, and, you know, let's see if we can't resolve this. Yes, sir.
You know, a couple of times you have said, well, the town can come on and check them out and see if they think, oh, there's a lot of cars there, you know, ask George about how it is. I mean, that is impacting our services. I mean, we have these, and I don't even know if it would happen, you know, that it probably doesn't because otherwise they would have been and we wouldn't be having such an issue here. But that, it's like, that's unreasonable to ask the town to supervise your problem. And as far as the upstream about the state and the regulations and the legislator, that doesn't come down to us in that neighborhood, you know? That, I don't know how that works. That's a problem. But businesses every day have changes in regulations and things that will just, they just throw their arms up and go. But they comply and they figure it out. Does the school represent a huge amount of his towing?
Does the school?
Yeah.
I don't, well.
I don't, we stopped towing to the school.
You don't tow to them? Where do those, where do their cars go?
And for by the school, you mean the university?
Right.
Or the local? Yeah. And for the police department, do you tow to the?
We do tow to the police department.
But to answer your first comment about it does impact services, I think as Ms. Halter said, you know, you normally think of impacting services as utilities and fire protection and that kind of thing, and snow plowing, those kinds of services. Doesn't impact that at all. What you are raising as an issue is a discretionary option by the town. The town could approve this and sit back and, as I said, somebody drives by and says, you know, it's all looking fine, and not another word is said. If someone said, I think we ought to check it out, I don't think that is a significant imposition on the town. And it's really, if the town is looking to make sure that George is in compliance, this special exception provides the tool for ensuring that. If everything looks fine as you drive by any one of the three locations, then, again, there's going to be no imposition on the town whatsoever.
As, sir, as I read the material that's been submitted, if there's non-compliance, let's say somebody comes by and they count up the cars and it's not in compliance.
Right.
It's been two, two and a half years ago that that same thing happened, and you wound up in the Superior Court, and there's been no change in the two and a half years. Isn't that true?
No, I mean, this, the agreement that was reached, which is from that Superior Court action.
But during that whole period of time, while the thing moved off to the Superior Court to be taken care of.
Correct.
Nothing changed, did it?
Yes, it did.
What changed?
So what changed is George has looked to limit and narrow the number of vehicles and has agreed with the town.
That's now. Over that period of time, nothing happened. So if I take Tom's example, nothing happens for a year, year and a half, two years?
The wheels of justice grind slowly, you know? An action gets filed in the Superior Court, and for most cases I'm involved in, they don't get resolved within a year and a half. And so what you're talking about in terms of the speed at which a case proceeds through the court, it doesn't mean that nothing has happened. It means that discovery is being done, documents are being collected, and the court. I know if I filed something tomorrow, I would be telling my client, it is September of 2024. Don't expect any kind of trial schedule until October, November of 2025 at the earliest. Even more likely, winter of 2026. So it's not that things aren't being done, it's they're being done behind the scenes and discussions between the attorneys and discussions with the clients and research being done on the allegations that have been made in the complaint and cross-complaint.
Go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Steiner, what does that represent? When the town has to hire and spend $30,000, $40,000 on attorneys, and the administrator has to work to prepare this great big case, why, why can't this just be worked out beforehand? Why did we get to this point? And you say no services, but I'm telling you, that is a service. We actually hire the attorneys at a, you know, the rate.
10 cents an hour for him.
She worked for the town. 10 cents an hour, I think you're hired.
That's services. I mean, that's, that, look what he's, nobody else, my, my place isn't causing, you know, multiple thousands of dollars in lawsuits and going on and on like that. Isn't that taking services and that these guys are expensive? Your ministry is probably one of the most expensive guys we've got.
Well, I will tell you, I certainly welcomed the, at mediation, the town manager's focus on, on the fact that, you know, this, this is a problem that didn't have to go to court. And we could have sat down and resolved it short of this, but it was the town that made the filing with the court, not George.
Wasn't that because nothing was happening?
I think there was frustration on both sides. And yes, the town filed and has things unfolded, and as I explained, the law and the background circumstances. I think both the town manager and the town attorney agreed that this is something that can and should be worked out. And indeed, it was, and it has been. This is the last step in resolving that. And this is something that the town has indicated, we'd feel more comfortable if there is a special exception for junkyard, limited to vehicles approved, because that, instead of having arguments, this gives us an affirmative control that we have, and Kirk's towing is willing to, has been willing to compromise and agree to that. So this is the last step in that process, as you can see from the stipulation. I mean, if for some reason this board didn't approve it, we have told the town. What's that?
We're not there yet.
Well, let's hope we don't get there, but, you know, I mean.
This is the Fortnite, the Daniel Webster we're talking about now. I mean, how would you characterize that neighborhood out there?
I'm sorry.
How would you characterize that neighborhood out there?
Well, it's certainly grown and changed over the last 20 years. I agree.
You know, commercial, industrial, residential, what?
Both.
Both, commercial, industrial, residential?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, commercial, industrial properties. I don't think there are any.
And that's what's in this, within 200 feet of that junkyard?
It's both. It's both.
The public will have a chance to speak.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Can we agree that this has been operated as a junkyard as defined by state law?
Excuse me?
Can we agree that this is a junkyard as defined by state law?
Not yet, it's not.
It's not?
No, it's been operated and continues to operate under the authority of Kirk's towing and Kirk's dealership rights to sell used cars.
You don't think there are three unregisterable, undrivable vehicles out there?
Oh, there clearly are, but.
Isn't that the definition of what a junkyard is?
That is part of the definition. I mean, the junkyard statute is much broader than that, but yes.
So it has been operated as a junkyard then, which was my question.
I believe.
I know you don't want to say that, but just look at the, look at the state law, and this got a definition in that.
I think you are too narrowly focused because Kirk's towing has the rights to have vehicles on the lot that it has towed. That doesn't make it a junk, I mean, by the definition you're giving me, the car dealerships on that road are junkyards too. Because they have unregistered, more than three unregistered vehicles sitting on the lot.
The last question I would like to ask is, you sort of glossed over the notion of the general welfare. When I first moved to Plymouth, I lived out by the traffic circle, it was empty property until I got to Harris Furniture. And there was no junkyard. And couldn't we say that if we looked at Harris Furniture, their value of their property has been diminished based on their neighbor? Is that, is that not against the general welfare of the community?
I think, I mean, I'd be hard pressed to imagine there's an appraiser here who's going to come in and give that opinion. I mean, the fact of the matter is that Kirk's has been in its location for over 20 years. It certainly didn't stop, you know, Walmart and these other big box stores and the fast food restaurants from building there over the last, what, 10 years or so? So I think the answer for you is no by proof of, look at who has developed right around Kirk's towing. I mean, if, I think if, if your premise was true. I mean, if, I think if, if your premise was true, there would be, you know, an empty sandlot across the street from Kirk's towing.
There's one right beside it.
What's that?
There's one right beside it, sir.
But I'm talking about.
Can I make a statement about that, that, that law?
You'll have a chance to speak, sir.
Okay.
You know, I've been coming up to Stinson Lake since the late nineteen eighties. And so I too have watched all the changes on Jenny Mountain Highway. So the reason I would negate the suggestion that property values have been diminished is by the proof of what has developed as a buddy neighbors and across the street neighbors to Kirk's towing.
Okay.
I mean, they, you know, these are, these are folks that do national studies before they, you know, put their big box stores on a lot and they certainly didn't find that to be an impediment.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, but it looks like Mr. McLaughlin had a question posed.
I noticed that the, the storage units down back, I heard that whoever it was knew him, but he sold or his widow sold the storage units. And now they've paved a new road. I mean, I don't know if you can say that that has no effect on, you know.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand what property you're talking about.
The, isn't the storage lockers out in back that are a butter?
Oh, yes, that's right.
And she just paved that new road.
Yes.
And, you know, you, what, what do you tell your people coming? Turn left at the junkyard? I mean, really? Is that, you think that helps her property value?
I can't imagine it hurts or she wouldn't have paved the road for purposes of customers coming in to store items on the, the property. And if that person is here tonight and speaks otherwise, that'll be news to me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, my pleasure.
Thank you.
We're going to move now to the public portion of the session. Anybody who wish to speak on behalf of the.
And I just want to remind people that we're speaking about the five forty Daniel Webster Highway property first, right? We'll address the other properties next.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Your name for the record, please.
Good evening, folks. My name is William Warren. I am the attorney for the town of Plymouth. I was in on the mediation that led to the settlement agreement and led to the applications that are before the ZBA tonight. I am here on behalf of the town and the select board to answer any questions that the ZBA may have about, in particular, our enforcement efforts and the consent decree that was entered into in the enforcement action. There are a few points that I'd like to address just based on the questions that the board just asked and what the applicant's attorney said. In the first instance, I think there is a distinction between a junkyard and automotive, rather vehicular sales and repair. We, we've got both uses going on, on each of these lots, really. Vehicular sales and repair is permitted by right on all three of these properties. And so to the extent that the towing business were closed down, the applicant would still be permitted under the terms of the previous planning board site plan approval to continue storing vehicles on this property. And so a lot of what we've done here, the town's enforcement action, is, as Attorney Steiner said, intended to control this use, to limit this use, to make this use more consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. I, I would note that the board observed the consent decree indicates that two hundred and fifty vehicles might be permitted on each parcel. I, I would like to note that that ambiguity was the result of our mediation and subsequent mediations. We mediated for an entire day to come up with the consent decree. We signed off on it and we waited to finalize it with the number of vehicles to be stored total. And so we had anticipated that we would be using a single number. But subsequent negotiations resulted in limiting the number of vehicles per lot. And so by the time that we had agreed to that, we already had a signed settlement agreement that was just looking to be filled in. And so it, it is the town's understanding, as well as the applicant's understanding, that the limitation is seventy-five, seventy-five, one hundred and a total on all three lots of two hundred and fifty. As to the claim that inspection is a service, I certainly don't disagree with the board on that. But I would note that it is not within the ZBA's jurisdiction to enforce the terms of a site plan or a previous planning board approval. That is the province of the town, of the select board in this case, and that is what we are doing. The, the reason we are here tonight is because the select board had to take enforcement action, because as you observed, things weren't getting done. And so this is part of that enforcement process. And it, it is our hope, certainly, that through collaboration, through the mediation that we engaged in, through tonight's hearings, hearing, we can come up with a solution that allows Mr. Kirk to continue operating his business, which is a vital business to the town. This is something where the town has had contracts with Kirk's towing for decades. The contract expired a couple of years ago and as part of the enforcement action, we are renegotiating their towing contracts. This is a vital service that Mr. Kirk provides to the town. And as to non-compliance in enforcement, it is expensive to file a whole new Superior Court action and go through the whole court process and discovery, as Attorney Steiner mentioned. However, we're not going to need to do that. We have a consent decree that has been signed by the applicant that has been submitted and has been approved by Judge McLeod that imposes these requirements, that requires the applicant to come into compliance with site plans, but also to limit the number of vehicles on each lot as specified in the consent decree. And so to the extent that the applicant fails to do that, fails to comply with that consent decree in the future, we're looking at consent, we're, we're looking at contempt of court. We're not looking at filing a separate action. We're not looking at going through this whole process. We're looking at filing a motion in Grafton County Superior Court to enforce the terms of the consent decree. It, it is within the court's contempt powers now to enforce the terms of that decree that has been submitted to the ZBA. And unless the board has any questions, that's really all I wanted to.
Sir.
Question, Tom? So you, you, you want two hundred and fifty cars? You're letting them have two hundred and fifty cars on this little lot down self-made, down the other end of town?
Two hundred and fifty cars, grand total between all three lots.
Seventy-five, seventy-five and seventy-five.
Correct.
How many are there now? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't, I don't know that right now. My thought is that right now, we're trying to get to a place where Mr. Kirk again can operate his business, where the town still gets the benefit of that vital service. Cars need to be towed, but they do. And the enforcement is going to come afterward. You know, this, this is, this is, we're at the point where the town's code enforcement officer can go out, can inspect the property. To the extent he's not allowed onto the property, he can get an administrative inspection warrant. All he has to do is go out, count the number of vehicles, and then if it doesn't comply with this consent decree, we file a motion for contempt.
How, how did this consent decree, which literally created, is trying to create a junkyard right in the middle of the commercial section and down in the residential section? How did this consent decree just bypass us completely? Nobody said anything to us.
We, we are independent, we have to find facts.
I know, but how did the selectmen, they sign on to this, knowing that, gee, well.
We don't have, we don't have to buy this.
This is my question, is if this is the case, then why have the ZBA?
The select board does not have authority to grant a special exception or to grant a variance. That is why we agreed to send this here to the ZBA to be reviewed by the ZBA at a public hearing where butters can chime in, can express their concerns and hopefully the ZBA can address them.
But it sounds like the decision that you want is already laid out. So if the decision you want is already laid out, then there's really why the public really doesn't actually have any influence.
No, that's not true.
But no, that's.
We are independent fact-finding and ruling on, based on the zoning ordinance. What the selectmen say or what politicians say or lawyers say is irrelevant. We have to take this as an independent case and make a decision. The state law gives us the responsibility to do that, not, not a consent decree. I mean, it's nice information, but it's not, it's not what we have to follow.
You are absolutely correct. I agree with that completely. I, I think though that the consent decree is important because it answers a lot of the questions that you've been asking tonight about enforcement, about compliance with, with existing restrictions. And so to, to that extent, I think it is important. You know, and.
If this application had come in before all these problems, the site would look completely different with fencing and shielding and buffering, probably less cars, but it would have been something that could move forward. But he didn't, he just stayed out there, so.
Tom, let's let the public have a chance to talk.
And so I, I, I understand that the board is frustrated with the past actions of the applicant and the way this business has been run and has led to the point where the town has been required to take action. I don't think that should enter into the board's consideration tonight. There are very clear special exception criteria and the board should be focusing on those criteria, not on what could have been, what could have happened in the past to prevent the situation we find ourselves in tonight. So it is our goal, it is our hope, from the town's standpoint, the select board's standpoint, that we can reach a point where reasonable conditions have been imposed, where this use can, can be limited appropriately to fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. And I would say that the, the town, at this point, has this case, has these properties on its radar. We are acting to enforce.
You're just repeating yourself now, sir. Other people probably want to have something to say.
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Any members of the public wish to have something to say in favor of or against the proposition?
Again, remember this is property five four zero Daniel Webster Highway. They were speaking about the first application.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm probably the only one that lives down that way.
Well, welcome. Can you state your name for the record?
Bruce Ahern, and I live at five oh three Daniel Webster Highway. And I will be submitting a letter to the board after I, after my statement. I am opposed to the granting of this special exception. I was opposed to it twenty years ago when he applied for, what he went to the planning board for. The area is not appropriate for a junkyard for numerous reasons. First of all, it's bordered in close proximity to numerous residential parcels. Mine, I have a rent, some mobile homes rentals. There's quite a few where it's right close to Whipple Will Trailer Park. On the backside, there are residents, both on the same side of the road and of River Road and on the other side of River Road. All of us down there are on wells, so if he tow's cars in there and they leak, we have to worry about our wells being contaminated. We are not on town water and sewer. We have to provide our own water. And that, so that is one problem. The second thing is, and one of the things that can be considered via the RSA's is that it's on one of the main entrance roads to the town of Plymouth. And the junkyard will detract from the image of Plymouth as people enter, enter the town. It's supposed to be a rural environment, it's supposed to be picturesque and it will affect that aspect of the area. RSA two thirty-six one eighteen requires that any new junkyard be a minimum of six hundred and sixty feet from the right-of-way of a non-interstate class one, class two, class three or class three A highway, which I'm pretty sure Route three is considered of, Route three is considered one of those. Or three hundred feet from a right-of-way of a class four, class five or class six highway. It's right on the road. It, another reason it shouldn't be there. I have concerns about it continuing to operate. I've had concerns about it since twenty years ago when he started hauling vehicles in there. The property is not being maintained as per the Department of Environmental Services, Motor Vehicle Salvage Yard, Environmental Compliance Manual and Self-Audit Checklist. If you look down there, from what I can see, there are weeds growing up around the vehicles. There is no way they can be inspected to see if there's leaks of fluids. And that's one of the things that should be mandatory, that they be inspected periodically and there should be notes made that they've been inspected and that there are no leaks. Because he's taking wrecked vehicles in there. They're gonna leak. And where does that leak go? Into the ground, into the water table. So that needs to be considered. I also have concerns that once it's designated as a junkyard, five, ten years from now, everybody here, town representatives, town lawyers and everybody, they're going to be gone. They're not going to remember the consent decree. They're not going to remember a lot of this stuff and things are going to happen down there that violate what the consent decree is now, but everybody will have forgotten about it. And yet I'm going to have to deal with it as I live down there. Some of the things, the other concern I have is, what if Kirk sells his business? Does this junkyard designation go away or does it stay? If it stays, he's going to sell it to somebody, they're going to run it as a junkyard. I know that George provides a service for the town and I'm sure the town's happy and I don't want cars on the highway causing problems. But there are other towing companies around, they don't seem to be having this problem. I don't know what they do with their vehicles. And my last question was answered by the town attorney as it, as far as being in non-compliance. My concern is that especially down there, where we kind of are ignored by the town, it's not going to be inspected by the code enforcement officer. And we're going to end up dealing with it. We're going to have the problems with the water. We're going to have the problems with the look. If you look at it now, weeds growing up around. If you look at it now, weeds growing up around it, it's not maintained very well, and I don't think it should be allowed to continue as a junkyard in that area.
Thank you, sir.
Can't speak to the areas in town, 'cause I'm not that familiar with them.
Thank you.
But as far as the rural area down there, I have an objection to it being granted in that area.
Anybody else want to speak about the Route 3 location?
Anybody have?
Yes, ma'am. Come forward, please.
Can you give that a joke?
Good evening. My name is Erin Godori McAlpine.
Can you say that one more time?
My name is Erin Godori McAlpine. I am a resident that my property abuts this property, forgive me, I only just found out about this today as I received my certified letter in the mail, and I came more with questions than anything else. I've been in the area for about four years. I have my home there with my children, my grand, my grandbaby's about to be born, and I do, this does raise concerns for me, as my neighbor suggested with, I have a well, and how does this impact the well? I just had to replace a septic system on my property and had to do all kinds of things to stay in compliance and protect the water to, when putting in a septic system. How does, how is that gonna be maintained? And I don't know if this is the correct place for this, and I'm sorry if it's not.
Are you in a buttermilk?
Excuse me? I am, yes, I live at 15 River Road. I'm on the backside of the property on, that I border it on Pines Road.
Thank you for being clear on that.
I just, and again, I don't know if this is the appropriate place for this, I'm sorry, but just wanted to voice my concerns about and echo my neighbor, you know, how is this gonna affect us out on the outskirts of town?
This is where you can speak for or against. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to comment on the Route 3 south application? Yes, sir.
I'm George Kirk, I'm the villain at hand tonight. So what I'd like to say is that I also have a well on that property, and I have a rental unit on that property that has a tenant next to it, and that well is fine. I'm not looking to contaminate my property or anyone else's. That property was in compliance, I worked diligently with Paul Freitas and Brian, and it was brought into where they were comfortable with that, and we, back then, had all come to an agreement because of the overwhelming amount of vehicles we towed. Since then, I've stopped towing for a lot of those places. We've shrunk our business down to a certain extent, and we're working on becoming more efficient with that. Again, yes, my business is a dirty business. When people wreck in the middle of the night, I tow their cars. I do it for multiple police departments, the town, I mean, when the town flips a vehicle over, they call me sometimes, and I deal with that for the town. We worked, the attorney for the town, my attorney, me, the town manager, worked tirelessly, spent a whole day working on this to come to this point, to try to shrink this down so that my lots didn't look as full. And so that was easy, and I have never denied anyone from the town to come and talk to me. Brian used to come all the time, I welcomed him, we had coffee, we'd walk around the lot, I had no issues with that, and I still don't. I have never denied the town access to any of my properties, and I will explain and talk about anything to anyone. You know, a wall was built between me and this town from, in my opinion, a certain town person, and this has bloomed into this huge thing where I have become the enemy of the town, basically. And we've worked to try to reverse this and get back to where, I mean, I, I have given my life, as has my wife, for over 30 years, we've missed every birthday party, every family event, every wedding, to make sure that this town had coverage if somebody was in trouble, we did it, and I did that. We've watched multiples of tow companies come and go over the years, I'm still here. I try to work with the town as best as I can. We service town vehicles, we, we help all the times that we can. And yes, you know, we've, we've had a disagreement on this stuff, and we did bring the things into compliance multiple times, and a lot of times that, all that had to be was a, a sit-down with Brian back then to say, hey, you know, let's get something done here, and we were able to do it. And some of them, I can't move until the state gives me permission, that's a felony charge for me if I get rid of these cars before I'm supposed to. I'm not willing to do that. And I have my own cars that, you know, we buy cars, I may buy three of the same vehicle, cut them and make one out of the three, you know, that's what we do, you know, that's how we survive, and then we sell those cars. And yes, it's, you know, what I do is, is a dirty business, you know? We clean up the messes all over town, in multiple towns.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Do you, when you tow the cars in, do you take any steps to take care of the environmental concerns that the people?
Yes, and we do, we charge the insurance companies for that, yes.
Like, what, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, we have containment systems we use, we have drain pans, if something is leaking, they get drained. And as a matter of fact, my waste oil system was put in the state's magazine for the system that I designed so that other companies around the state would follow what I was doing. So I'm, I'm not the villain that everybody thinks I am. You know, I, I, at some point, I have to retire, and I'm either gonna lease these properties or do whatever I'm gonna do, so I'm not gonna, you know, contaminate them, would make no sense. I am a long-term business of this town, and I've devoted my life to service of this town. Somehow, we got stray here, and you know, again, my door is always open. If someone wants to have a cup of coffee with me and talk about problems and solutions, I would rather have that than end up in this court battle that we had, which I think was totally unnecessary. A simple conversation with me would make a huge difference.
A question was asked before, sir, about how many vehicles are at the West Plymouth site?
I am not to the numbers yet, we're working on that diligently. I'm close. And we're, we're extremely busy with the, with the state rewiring all of the cable systems. There's hundreds of cable trucks here, and we are fixing so many of those trucks that we are just jam-packed with work. So the lots have tons of trucks in them right now, at least the Tenny Mountain one. And we're shorthanded like everybody else, you know, since COVID, you just can't get workers. It's very difficult, so we have, we're multiple things that we're fighting. And yes, like you said, there's regulations that come and businesses adapt, and this is all part of what we're trying to do, you know, which I felt could have been done much easier than what this turned into.
We're here.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
You mentioned that the well on your property is fine, have you tested that well?
Yeah, not in the last couple of years, but yes, it's been tested.
And not just for bacteria, but for chemicals?
Yep.
PFAS or?
Well, they test, we send it to the state lab, they test for whatever they test, I don't.
That, that they go, they do that kind of testing for all kinds of junkyards? Is that they, you sent the water sample to them on the context that you're a business running a junkyard and a?
I did not make those stipulations, I will not say that.
Vehicle or sales and repair?
We, we've had all of our wells, I have wells on all my properties, and I had them tested, and it was a few years ago.
And you drink the water?
Yep.
At your facility?
I don't drink the water at 540, but my tenant does.
Yeah.
Any questions, Tom? Nope, okay. Thank you, sir.
Uh, that's part storage, that's full of truck parts. And in answer, that lot was mowed twice this year by me. And yes, the weeds are up, I've, I've had some medical issues that I've been dealing with, severe medical issues, so I'm behind on some things. Yes, we did mow it. It's up now, I'll, I will mow it. Again, a phone call, hey, George, can you do me a favor, mow the grass? It's that simple, we'll take care of it.
George, what would you sell this as if you wanted to retire?
He said lease.
I would prefer to lease my properties than sell them, so I would have residual income. And I'm not to that point yet.
I see.
And, and you know, I, I'm not looking to operate junkyards in all my properties. This is a mediation thing. I run a towing business. An effect of being in the towing business is that I have to dispose of a bunch of cars that I don't really want to dispose of either, or handle, but I have to, because that's my job. And that has become very difficult since COVID, and it was difficult before, but now it's even worse because the state is so far behind. And again, it's a felony if I get rid of somebody's car. And the state of New Hampshire has the Privacy Act, which doesn't allow the police officer to tell me who owns the vehicle. I have to petition the state to even find out who owns it, which is ridiculous. Every other state in the country, I would have a computer tied into the DMV, and I towed in Massachusetts many years ago, which would give me instant access, which would speed that process up, but because of New Hampshire's law, we don't have access to that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to talk about the West Plymouth site? Yes, sir.
Can you state your name for the record?
Sure, my name's Brandon Santone. I was asked to come on behalf of my company, which is New Car, which is right down the road here from, from George's facility. First and foremost, I want to just clarify, 'cause I don't want any kind of conflicts, that George is both a customer and has helped us, and we've been a customer of his in the past, so I want to be 100% clear on that, so there's no kind of confusion there. And he does absolutely provide a service, and a necessary service at that. Our questions are more based on, and might help and might be something that's relevant or perhaps irrelevant, but I know you mentioned as far as when a new junkyard goes up, there are certain parameters that are put into place, things of that nature. And I don't know with this, if there is a plan for there to be any kind of fencing, to maybe get rid of some of the visual aspects of this, or if there's any plan for them to become a green yard, which, whether or not you're familiar with, which would really speak to a lot of what some of the residential abutters are concerned about, as far as, you know, what kind of effects there could be on the well systems. When, when you are a green yard, the state actually helps to maintain that and inspect that and go through those parameters in which the cars can be stored, and parameters in which all of the fluids and materials need to be disposed of. So in my mind, that would be something that would be a big deal to, I think, everybody in the area, knowing that.
Can you, just, who are you again?
Brandon.
I'll, I'll slow it down, Brandon Santone, S-A-N-T-O-N-E.
And you're, you're?
I'm representing New Car.
Are you a resident of Plymouth? Just ask.
I am not, ma'am.
You are not, okay.
But New Car is on Tenny Mountain Highway, is it not?
Correct, so he's an employee of a local business and they sent him, right? Are you trying to go early 'cause you want to leave?
100%, I was, yes, ma'am. Nobody else seemed to want to talk.
No, so I was letting you go 'cause I know the clock and this is gonna be a long night.
100%, and I've, I've been at work since 6:30 this morning.
Yeah, exactly.
At the end of the day, it, it's not necessarily a for or against for us, but, but we just had some questions, and we weren't sure when would be a time that some of these places, you know, some of these questions would be answered.
Right, and they do seem like that they are all similar questions, so I really appreciate you bringing them up.
And, and I felt that they were germane to all the locations, as far as what the concerns were, because businesses like this do need to operate. My family actually operates, or operated for a very long period of time, a salvage yard in the Berlin, New Hampshire area, which was PNL, and they became a green site to address some of these concerns, and, you know, paid more attention to the road frontage and the signage and things along those natures to kind of hide some of this, if you will, for lack of a better term, because to George's point, it's a dirty business, for sure, but it's a necessary one, I think, to the lawyer's point. And at the end of the day, I feel like there should be some kind of middle ground, some kind of meeting area to kind of make this all right, because at the end of the day, it's going to continue to operate, it's going to continue to be needed. It's gone all the way to the Superior Court from my, my understanding, from what I'm hearing tonight, and still, there's no definite resolve. So it just seems to me that, you know, to George's point again, I think that if everybody could come together and find some kind of a, some kind of happy medium. Now, I don't live on the property, so I can't speak to that. I, I can't understand what that's like, I can't pretend to. But as a local business that does use this service, but also feels as though, you know, there's certain parameters as a car dealership that we have to hold to as well, that we're familiar with.
As a business.
As a business. And, you know, there's a necessary to it, but I think that there's some things that could really be done to help answer some of these concerns.
How many cars on your lot?
How many cars on my lot right now? 132, sir.
That's across the street and on the other?
Both, both sides of the road, yes, sir.
Sides of the road. And that's what, about, you got about five acres between the two?
I believe it's five and, five and a half, yes, sir.
Five and a half acres. I don't have any questions.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak about the Route 3 south? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jana Sayern, I promised my husband I would be brief. I don't know if he believes that, but. My life work was basically real estate-related fields, and I appreciate the fact that you own a business, 'cause I've done that too. It's not easy, and I know that it might be a valuable business, but Bruce, in the 24 years that I've lived here in the house at 503, we took the Intervale Schoolhouse, we put money into that and love into that, that's where his mom and dad went to school, jacked it up, moved it on to a new basement, it had been a student rental, it was a mess when we bought it. Bought the house next door, haven't decided what to do with that yet. We take, we work with a forester when we work with the trees. We've moved endless tires that used to be on the property where our two mobile rentals are, that had been at one time a service station, I think. Tire, tire recycling. Lots of money, lots of energy, and we're proud of where we live. We don't like the idea of a junkyard, not to be mean, I don't think you're a villain, but it cannot be allowed to deteriorate, to be an eyesore, because then our land decreases in value. We worked with, we also had a duplex up the road, and the lady who bought the Grange Hall, is that what it was called? We didn't have those in Wyoming where I grew up, Granges. She wanted a B&amp;B, an Airbnb, so they put a lot of money into that, and they bought the duplex that we had next to it, and they've improved that. That is a residential area, and I know that the zoning is such, that that's, you know, there's some wiggle room there, but boy, I don't want to see it deteriorate into a junkyard. No way. And I don't know what 75 cars looks like, but I don't think I like it. So that's my comment, and I do appreciate anything you can do to keep it tidy.
But I just say that there's been many more cars than that there previous times, and we're reducing those numbers now. And it, my intent, for you as a neighbor, is not to have that be a junkyard.
And so the designation is very important, because whatever your intent is today, I've bought and sold a lot of places, and it can change.
We can't have two-way conversations.
So anyway, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else about the Route 3? Counselor, do you want to make any comment now that?
Uh, yes, I'd love to, thank you. So I, I wanted to respond to a couple of the things that were highlighted. Mr. Ahern and others talked about impact on wells. You heard George say, he has his well tested, he's been there over 20 years, it's been, last time was a couple of years ago, but he's had it tested multiple times, no problems. And he, you heard him describe the kind of process he goes through to protect his own property, and it's a model that is being followed by, by others. So I, I believe it's safe to say, there's no evidence from any abutters that anybody has ever had a well problem, because certainly if it existed, we would have heard about it long before this, or if George tested his well and it came up showing a problem, it would have been revealed. Yes, ma'am?
The model wasn't the green yard that Brandon Santone spoke about, right? The model was more for disposing of?
Waste oils.
Waste oils, right? So it was a particular kind of model, not a general business excellence model?
I know the gentleman has left, but he didn't describe in any detail the green model to his family. I know the gentleman has left, but he didn't describe in any detail the green model to his family.
The green yard, he called it. He said the state helps to maintain and inspect fluid disposal.
Yeah, and I...
I have a green yard certification.
Okay, so George does have a green yard certification for the process you go through.
I went to the schools. I did all of that.
All right.
And you carry through that on your properties?
I do.
So that was one thing I wanted to address there. I think Mr. Ahern raised an issue about, he opposed this 20 years ago. Well, it went before the town. The town approved it. And it's been operating since that time. The woman who talked about her septic system being replaced, she certainly wasn't complaining that there was something that had to do with the way Kirk's Towing operates. It's business. She worried about her well, but again, no evidence of any impact on any well. And, you know, well, it's not as if George has only been there for two years and folks might be concerned about what could be coming down the road. He's been there for 20 years. And I think he has a track record that he can stand by. So I don't think that is a criteria or a concern that the town should have. I know I was questioned about, oh, you're imposing duties on the code enforcement officer. Except that's why the town has a code enforcement officer. You pay an individual, not just as to, you know, number of cars on a lot, but, you know, everything else that has to do with code enforcement. So it's not an additional burden. It's not an additional duty.
It's a part-time position in town.
But...
And it's a fairly new one, but it is a part-time position.
I know I've dealt with code enforcement officers in so many different towns, and they, they carry a lot of weight with what happens. Yes, sir.
You follow that thought, and I think the town should probably have a paid attorney on the payroll. No, I mean full-time in the building.
What I think is, and I didn't recognize Will when I came in, I apologize. But as he said, why are we here and look at where we are? We're not looking at a new lawsuit down the road. We're looking at compliance, good faith, and if it does appear that there's a problem, it's simply a single motion to the court, contempt. And there'd be maybe a two-hour hearing in front of a judge where, Will on behalf of the town says, here's what we observed, here's some photos of what we observed, and me on behalf of George explaining either why or why that doesn't fit within a notion of contempt. So it's not like an entire lawsuit. I assume the best of my clients.
No, I wouldn't, I wasn't insinuating that. I'm just saying that you, you, you know, assume that something's going to be done in a couple of hours and the contempt motion's going to be approved.
I'm very familiar with the definition of assume. But the point being that we have reached a threshold.
We can do it for all three.
And Will is right. Anything in the future is the minimus time.
Because of that, I think it all lies.
Will would file bankruptcy if he was the town's attorney, at least as to this issue, because it's not as if it would or could cause significant legal fees. And that's a good thing. I think that covers the points that I thought might be helpful to point out from the, from the oppositions I heard. I guess I've been active around the town of Plymouth for a couple of decades as well. Jerry Boyle and I are very active in the scouting program, so I'm up here in Plymouth for the Cub Scouts and Boy Scout events. And I must admit, I won't pretend to have expertise in this, but I always consider downtown Plymouth to be exit 24. To me, exit 25 is the way you get to Stinson Lake. You got some fast food restaurants you can stop by, but, you know, the gazebos in downtown Plymouth, the businesses are all located on Tenny Mountain Highway, including Kirk's Towing. So I think the comment about, well, this detracts from downtown, I don't think that's a fair statement. And even Mrs. Ahern talking about somebody wanting to put in an Airbnb, knowing that Kirk's Towing is located there, it's like nobody's afraid of how this impacts the values of their property, so... And if there was concern about that, you know and I know, there'd be somebody here who says, I'm a real estate appraiser. I've gone and looked at all these properties. I can tell you there's a negative impact. And I've been before zoning boards in other towns where those experts come in. I'm sure you have received that kind of expert opinion. It's kind of a false flag here because indeed, the investments that have been made right around Kirk's Towing show that people have a lot of faith in the value of their properties right there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am?
My name is Ina Ahern. I'm a Plymouth resident. I live at 567 Daniel Webster Highway, which is a little south of the property. I have a comment and a question. And Mr. Kirk, I'm not saying that there is contamination at this point, but one of the issues is that once there is contamination, it's too late. And I'm not sure what water quality testing you have had done on your wells, but I know that the standard test does not always test for organics. My well was fine the last time I had it tested, but that was many, many more years ago than it probably should have been. But I know that there's, you know, there's a fee for coliform, there's a fee for the regular stuff, and then there's an additional fee for organics. And then my question is, if this exemption does get approved, how much of the other junkyard regulations, such as the screening, obviously they can't move at the 660 feet back from the road that you were talking about, but how much of the other junkyard regulations will this property have to do to come into compliance with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms., could you just state your first name for me one more time?
Ina. I-N-A.
Thank you, Ina.
May I?
Go ahead, sir.
Just one more comment from the town select board side. You know, I've heard a lot of legitimate concerns raised tonight. I don't think any of them are concerns that can't be addressed through reasonable conditions. And the ZBA does have authority to impose reasonable conditions. If there is a concern with environmental contamination, require that the applicant comply with best management practices for scorched motor vehicles. If there is a concern as to the upkeep of the property, grass stomping mode, include a condition that the grass stays less than 10 inches. You know, to the extent, I heard the word eyesore multiple times. I will note that part of the town's enforcement action is to ensure screening that was required as part of the site plan approval. If the ZBA and butters aren't satisfied with the effectiveness of that, add additional conditions. Specify what gets us there, how we can get this across the finish line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just have one question, since I can't talk directly to the people. It says 75 vehicles. Does that include a box trailer or multiple box trailers or whatever else? Or what is, what is that requirement on there? As far as a junkyard, I know can end up having a lot of box trailer-type things for handling parts and all that, but is that part of the 75 vehicles? Or is that in addition to the 75 vehicles?
I'll read you what it says, sir. "The specific sites are appropriate locations at adequate size for the use. To ensure that the subject properties are not overburden, Mr. Kirk agrees to limit the number of vehicles stored on any one of the subject properties to..." And then the number 250 is in there, but now we've heard evidence that that's not so. 100 on the Tenny Mountain Highway, 75 on the second Tenny Mountain Highway, and 540 has 75 vehicles. And that, it just talks about vehicles. So if it's a truck, that's a vehicle. If it's a towed vehicle, towed car, that's a vehicle. 75 of those on that site.
Can they have 10 other box trailers on the site?
That's a vehicle, sir.
And are box trailers, do they have wheels? They're drivable?
They need to be towed.
These are storage, like...
Storage bins?
What do they call those? The big metal, what do they call those, Joseph?
Shipping container.
Shipping container. So it's a shipping...
Not a shipping container, but a semi-trailer. Semi-trailer.
Semi-trailer.
Is that considered a vehicle, or is that considered...
Is a semi-trailer different from a shipping container?
It's not a vehicle. It doesn't have a motor.
And where would that fall within our zoning ordinance?
If it's in a permanent location, affixed to the ground, it could be considered a structure. It depends on if it's in a permanent fixed location or if it's not. Otherwise, it would be, I would assume, parking.
It's just parked.
It's just parked there. And does the town have any regulations that limits the number of those, even if they're temporary?
No specific regu... There is a provision about temporary structures.
Yeah.
So...
A structure.
Yeah. Temporary structures are regulated a little bit differently, which is usually, often does include like a shipping container-type situation. But I mean, that would be the difference, is if it's a temporary structure or if it's parked.
At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing on 640, and we'll move on.
540?
Okay. Route 3 south. And we'll move on to 491.
Yep.
Counselor, would you like to be heard on 491?
Since you will read each one of these independently, I, even though you've heard testimony about all three lots, if I could say that I'd like to incorporate everything that was testified to about 540 into the special exception request for 491. I'd be glad to do that if the zoning board would accept it. That would certainly shorten my presentation.
As long as you point out the unique features of 491.
Yes.
Sure. And in doing so, let me address what is included in the consent decree as well. And that is that, I mean, 540 has vehicles for sale out front. And so it wouldn't be logical, no different than New Car, wouldn't be logical to put some kind of fence across the front because people see the vehicles at 540. But there is an agreement in the consent decree that addresses fencing at 491 and at 495. Oh.
540.
540, excuse me, at 540. There is, and you can see it in the consent decree, there is, I mean, there was a concern about fencing. There is an address of fencing. For 491, I don't know that there's anything particularly unique about it that differs from the factual findings and factual issues that I addressed as to, addressed as to the special exception criteria. For 540, again, as to each lot, there is an adjustment as to the number of vehicles here. 491 is 75, right? 75 vehicles. And otherwise, it certainly fits the special exception criteria. All of them were essentially identical submissions, but because there's three separate lots, they are addressed separately. If you had questions regarding 491 specifically, I'm happy to answer them or have George answer them.
Is this the only of the three lots that there's cars for sale at?
495.
As well?
Yes.
Okay. And so the two of those, the preference is not to have a fence at all on the property?
Right, because across that frontage there is where the vehicles are seen, no differently when you drive by New Car. They've got the, you know, vehicles for sale listed, sitting right out front.
Okay. And can you just tell us how the, that lot, and it has expanded this store number, next door, what is it, 495 or whatever, that used to be a parts store? And now it's wall-to-wall cars. And you want to, you want to enthron this forever with a special exception? That's going to make it that, yeah, those two pieces can be a junkyard as long as, long as, long. That's the way it goes.
It's only necessary because of the, the not at the level of the state of New Hampshire. I mean, we can't control the number of people that get into accidents. We can't control the number of folks that are arrested for DEWEs. But it's a large volume of cars. And when they come in, Kirk's Towing doesn't have the ability to expedite the process of moving them. If he could get the cars down to, you know, 20 per lot or not even using the box store lot, I call it the motorcycle snowmobile building, if he didn't have to store any vehicles there because the population of vehicles has been diminished because of the state being able to process things much more efficiently, George would love it because he makes money when he's able to get those vehicles out.
Sir, okay. Would you please give us detail on item 3 on the consent decree?
Actually, I don't have the consent decree in front of me.
It talks about fencing, sir.
Item 3. So prior to September 30th, take all actions reasonably necessary, repair, replace, and/or install fencing as specified in the approved site plans. That's the paragraph?
Yep.
Okay, sure. So that is in the process. So the answer is...
What is the height of the fence, sir?
We agree.
So the original approval was four feet, and we called and got that changed to six feet. There was some confusion on that, because what storage yard has a four-foot fence?
I know.
I think the neighbors, I'm sure, would appreciate the taller fence.
And so there's your answer, looking to have a outside third-party fence company install a six-foot fence?
That's just on 540?
That is just on 540.
That's the only fenced block?
Yep.
And that's the only one that's in a residential area?
I just don't know. This, this New Car guy says he's got five acres and like 150 vehicles, and his parking lots look great. And George has got like, whatever, what's he got, like a half an acre there?
The difference is there are like nine New Car sites in the state of New Hampshire, not counting what's in Massachusetts. They have the...
I understand that, but I don't know how you can propose that this doesn't have a negative effect on the values. I've sold land before, sir, and when you go to sell it, the buyer comes in, and you're right, he's a rich, sophisticated guy, and you say, well, I want it $100,000. Well, he's going to go, you're right across the street from a junkyard. You're right next door to a junkyard. I bet the woman out back that sold that, what do you call it there, that storage locker's paid.
You're just arguing, Tom.
I'm sorry.
Okay. But the answer to your question is...
Adverse the effect.
Sure. You have no evidence before you to sustain that concern. But what you do have is proof, is that, you know, 20 years ago, driving down that road, there was nothing on the right. And now, look at what that has developed into. And they know that there's, you know, used car, car repair, vehicles that have been towed, sitting across the street. That has not inhibited anybody, any of these corporations, from investing monies into building these new lots. Not a one. I don't think... Not, not a one. I don't think there's any space across the street anymore. It's all sold out, built out. So I think that's the fact that is the answer, is the proof, is in who came in and who has developed the lot, and look at what they've, you know, look at what they've been willing to do. It hasn't been impacted by the fact that George has all these accident wrecks that he's towed in, um, and is disposing of.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I would guess I would ask you to rely on that proof, and not speculation that, you know, these are cars that are crashed. They must have a negative impact. Clearly not, right? I, I don't know the answer to the question of, have any of these businesses come before the town, seeking an abatement of their taxes? Because Kirk's towing was across the street before they even bought the property and built. I don't, I don't think so, but I don't know. So I don't wanna pretend to have that knowledge.
Anybody else want, want to speak about the Tenny Mountain Highway sites?
Short comment. Um, just want to note, uh, sorry, William Warren, Town Counsel. I just wanted to note, um, that we're here tonight for special exceptions, not variances, and I think that some of the criteria that are being discussed are being intermingled with the special exception criteria. Things like, uh, diminishment of the values around properties is a variance criterion. Um, the special characteristics of the property is a variance criterion. They don't apply to special exceptions.
Thank you, sir. Did you people discuss at all the issue of fencing on the Tenny Mountain Highway?
I think he's asking you, sir. Yes.
In, in terms of what precisely?
Fencing, putting it up.
Aesthetics.
So, in our, the town's enforcement action, one of the allegations is that the fencing that is there does not necessarily comply with the terms of the site plan approval. And so the goal is to bring it into compliance, the property into compliance, with the site plan approval. I think Mr. Kirk noted that there was some confusion as to the height of the fencing.
I thought that was for the five forty property.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I think he said clearly that the two Tenny Mountain properties haven't, don't require any fencing.
They, they do not, no. So...
And that was never discussed for Tenny Mountain?
It has not, because it was not a condition of the, um, planning board approval. Could be a condition.
Did you want me to read the letter we received?
Not just yet.
Okay.
Let's see if other people wanna talk about. Yes, sir.
Paul Richelson. I have a business on Tenny Mountain Highway that abuts the Kirk's business, Feet First. I've had a business there thirty-two years, and yes, Tenny Mountain Highway has grown a lot. My questions are more specific to what is it going to look like different from it is now? So you're talking a hundred and seventy-five potential cars on those two properties on Tenny Mountain Highway?
Yeah.
Do we have any idea of a number right now?
Currently, we have not been able to ascertain that.
Fifty, seventy-five, hundred right now?
There's more than that.
More than that?
Yeah.
More than a hundred and seventy-five?
Yes. And we've, we've been reducing that number to, to meet the numbers.
But there's no guarantee with the state's backlog that that's gonna get much better, other than you curtailing your business, which is a hardship on yours.
You've already done it.
So that's, that's my main concern, is what is it going to look like? How much more change is Tenny Mountain Highway going to, uh, be affected with the visibility?
Which business is yours, sir?
Feet First. Uh, I'm in the second, in, there's a condo association, the bank. I used to be above the bank for twenty-eight years, and then bought a condo in the second building above the dental office.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He did my husband's ski boots. Thank you. Thank you very much. Essential service.
Anyone else wanna speak about the Tenny Mountain application?
Sorry, folks. I knew this was gonna be a long night, I know.
My name is Dennis Hiller.
Hi, Doctor Hiller.
And I am the trustee for the Hiller Family Revocable Trust. We own the, uh, the third building that was alluded to previously, first and second floor. Uh, thank you very much for your great civic education here tonight, folks. And, and I applaud, uh, the, the questions that, that were posed here, and I do so because they were similar to mine. Uh, I, I questioned the, uh, the compliance issue, and what it, what is it going to take to be sure that's in compliance? Because to be sure, uh, the overcrowding and such is a concern. What's also a concern, and I thought, under general welfare, item number six, that, um, economic or sellability was, was included in that, and attorney seems to think that maybe that's in the other category. But I, I doubt that the property has been devalued by that, but yet I would feel, just from a common sense business perspective, that perhaps it hasn't appreciated it as well as, as other properties have. I'm concerned about the visual aesthetics. Uh, on our, on our west, we have new car. Looks, that's fine. On our right, we have what I consider to be actually visually unattractive site, and I get that you have new, shiny new cars on one side, and you've got some beat-up old things down there for sale. And, and I get that. But yet I'd, I'd submit that maybe with a little TLC, it could look a lot better and, and improve the neighborhood just from, from that aspect. I was a little bit disheartened to hear that there was no screening recommended, because I think the visual effect of that area going to number two, um, or excuse, yeah, number two, uh, how the specific site is an appropriate location. Not looking like that, it's not. Uh, again, I was surprised, a bit disheartened, but I guess that's not under the, the purview of, of the CBA.
That's, that's not accurate, sir. We can put conditions on our...
We can put conditions on that.
Another civics lesson from you. Thank you. Uh, number five, and, and I would agree that, it, there, there is going to be a, a, a cost associated with the compliance issue. Uh, I don't know if it's gonna be excessive. I can't testify to that. But no, it's, it's gonna cost more. And although I'm not a resident, I do pay taxes, and they're quite steep, the way they are now. Need to see, and those, those go up any further. And that's all I have for my notes.
Any questions?
Any questions, sir?
So, can I just ask one thing? Um, are you opposed to this project, to the, to the approval?
So far from what I've heard, yes. Uh, I don't doubt that, as Counselor suggested, it probably could be mitigated. I mean, what are their concerns? It looks terrible. And maybe a cup of coffee with, with the gentleman, and say, hey, you know, we put an eight-foot fence up. How about, don't have the junkiest cars up front? How about out of sight, out of mind? How about when someone drives by, they don't know it's even there. They just say, hey, there's a used car slot right in here. That might be helpful. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's, you know, it's got professional offices there. I don't think it's a junkyard.
Do you own those professional offices, sir?
I'm sorry, sir?
Do you own the professional office building, or the next one over?
Well, there's, there's actually, I own the third one, the one that abuts Snell's.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and my, my business is Hiller Orthodontics. I'm the orthodontist in town. So I'm, I'm up on the second floor. We'll have a psychiatrist in there soon. Uh, we have a health, uh, agency on, on the mid, mid-state is, is a tenant there now. Dr. Mosenthal, the chiropractor as well. In the adjacent building, there is a general dentist. So that's the, the type of clientele that we've got there.
That's nice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
All essential services, right? All essential services.
You can't live without orthodontic.
Okay.
Anyone else that wants to speak?
Yes, sir.
Danny DeRozier. I work at Woodsville Guaranteed Savings Bank. It's the same condo association that my co, my co-tenants here occupy. And I've known George for a long time, and be straight, he, he and my son work together, so I, I'm in an awkward spot here. But, uh, I'm just gonna read a statement from the bank president. How's that?
Sounds great.
Short and sweet. I agree with what Paul and Dennis said to, to some degree.
Will you be submitting that to the board, sir?
It's in an email form, so...
That's fine.
Yep. I think it could be as simple as each property owner, in this case, George, has a responsibility to maintain their properties in a manner that, that does not reflect negatively on the abutter's values. That's it. How's that?
That's a president's statement.
That's a president's statement.
Very much a bank statement, yeah.
Would you please, Joseph?
He's a man of few words. I'm gonna take out my personal comment.
That's totally fine. It does not need to be submitted to the... And Danny, are you a resident of Plymouth?
No, I'm not. I'm a resident of Hampton. I've worked in three community banks, so forty-six years at one time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We like Hampton, to be the time. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak over here for a moment.
Oh, yes.
We've got a chance, sir. Thank you for putting your hand up. If you'll wait, sir, let's, let's hear from the TV, and go right ahead, sir. Your name?
Great. Uh, yeah, my name is Richard Nastrom, and I am the psychiatrist previously mentioned there by Dr. Hiller. Uh, I have a business, uh, adjacent to Paul, which is Rachelson's, and it's primary health, uh, providing various forms of, um, health services for professional people. Uh, and I've listened in to the conversation today, and I appreciate that, all the inputs from everybody. And I think I'd like to just make my comment on a very sort of broad, big-picture, uh, level. Um, I'm about two years, two to, close to three years located at that location, and, uh, you'll certainly appreciate the developments of, of nearby market basket, and having that sort of upcoming, uh, newer style of, of businesses coming through. Uh, you know, as a professional and as a, a medical professional, it's, it's kind of falls under that same, um, business, uh, quality or energy, if you will. And I realize that the current, um, auto, auto store or towing store next door has been there for a long time, and, uh, definitely was, probably looked very different back then. But I would like to represent the newer, uh, people coming into Plymouth. I'm not a resident of Plymouth, but I plan to work here for a very long time. I really love this area. Uh, and at no point would I like, uh, Mr. Kirk here to, to suffer economically, or, or not able to perform his business. But at the end of the day, I think we're, we're, this discussion here about the Tenny Mountain location comes this kind of clash of businesses, or upcoming situations where, where things are heading into the future. And just, you know, uh, in terms of the aesthetics, or business value, or, or so forth, I think it all kind of lumps into uh, what kind of, you know, zone this is, and where we wanna be. Uh, I, I understand it's a commercial zone. Uh, if I understand it correctly, uh, junkyards tend to be more located in, in maybe industrial zones and so forth. Uh, so even though I did, well, I was well aware of, of the current status, status of affairs as, as we started the business, my hopes are that, you know, it, it will become growing, uh, even further for professional people, and potentially, uh, finding alternate locations for, for, uh, the type of activity, uh, that, that the junkyard would have. So I'm just here to represent newer incoming people, and what we look for, and what we appreciate. Uh, you know, I have many people traveling from all over New Hampshire, frankly, to come see me here, and, uh, they all mention how, they love it. I hear beaut, the beautiful, uh, area and, and so forth, and, uh, um, so I just wanted to add that to the conversation, uh, today. And, uh, yeah, I don't think I really had anything else. Uh, just learned a lot about, uh, junkyards today, more than I thought I would. And I really hope, uh, we can work out some kind of, uh, you know, win-win situation here for everybody, uh, today.
For the record, sir, are you a Plymouth resident?
Uh, no, I'm not.
No, okay.
Can I ask, Richard, would you say you're, um, opposed or in favor of the application as it rests, or?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed, okay.
Yep.
And would you be in favor of it with conditions, or would you be more opposed to the application?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed. Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else on TV? No.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Sir?
Read another.
Russ Harris, Harris Family Furniture. Um, neighbors with, uh, these guys, um, they've been, um, they're, they're wonderful neighbors. I do business, uh, with them, with our trucks, with my motorcycle. Um, they've done business with me as well. There's been times where, you know, whether there was snow removal or something like that, you know, they're always, always willing to help. It sounds to me, though, that this has been, the town might have dropped the ball here a little bit. I mean, how long has, um, the, you know, there, I don't, has, had, have they been in compliance right along since? Okay. So, um, it's, I, I think it's really important that the town and George, you guys come to some sort of agreement. Because I think what happened is by not addressing these issues along the way, this is, this is where we're at. You know, the, I, I put a ton of money into my store, as far as the appearance, uh, you know, making it look nice. I mean, I have people that come from all over New Hampshire, even New England, um, and it's really, it's really important. And, you know, I'm not a rocket scientist, but I would guess that it would affect my property values. So I, my, my, my goal, what I, what I hope is that the town and, uh, the Kirks can just really come up with a, uh, you know, I kind of feel the same way as New Car. Um, I want this to, I want this to work out, and I don't think it's, I almost don't think it's fair to ask us if we're in favor for this or against, because I don't think we should even be, we should even be talking about that.
It is what we ask all applicants, or all people that speak on these kinds of...
I know, but I don't think, if the job was done properly right along, you wouldn't be asking us that question. So, you know, I think there was some balls dropped on both sides, but I really think, just see if we can come up with a nice, you know, make it look as nice as possible, bring it into, uh, as much compliance as we can. Uh, they do perform a nice service. They're respected in the area. Um, I would like to have it look, you know, nice, 'cause it would help my business. Um, but anyway, they're, you know, they're good people. I enjoy, you know, doing business with them. And, um, so I just hope there's, um, a good, you know, a good outcome, because this is gonna last forever if everybody keeps, you know, if this, if, if this goes into like a fight, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna end. So find, find some common ground and, and get it done. Um, so that's it.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I would make one comment based on the last statement. There is no grandfathering in non-enforcement. The fact that it's been there twenty years is, is more or less irrelevant in terms of what we have to decide. We're here to determine whether it meets the criteria, uh, to be a junkyard as defined, and the fact that it may or may not have been in the past, all that energy and time put in, is really irrelevant to the things that we have to decide here. I wanna ask both counsel a question. Do you believe that working together, you could come up with a set of conditions that would be agreeable to the town, having heard the evidence that you've heard?
I, I do.
Well, I tell you then, I'm... Well, I tell you then, I'm going to ask the other board members. If we continue this till the October meeting to see what they come up with, otherwise we're going to impose conditions, and they might not be things which either side would agree to. But I think this comments about screening, particularly from expensive property on both sides, makes a lot of sense. It's either that or, or we have to do it on our own, and we will, because we have the right to impose conditions to ameliorate the evidence. Now, the fact that it's been there this long without the screening, there's no grandfathering. We're dealing with what's happening right now. So I'm, I'm going to suggest that the board makes that motion to continue this matter till the October meeting, and that you people submit well prior to that meeting, a proposal of conditions that this board would place on the property. And if you can't come up with one, we're, we're still not promising that we will even approve this.
Yeah, okay.
But without, it's going to be approved, if it's approved, it's going to be with conditions. So we have to have something to, for us to bite on. Same thing's true with the Route 3 South property. Okay? And we're not promising that we would approve that either, even given conditions that you may come up with. Okay?
It's funny, we, we don't represent the selectmen.
Right.
We really, and we don't represent any particular...
By law, by law we do not. The, the law gives us a different, independent responsibility under the zoning law.
But we really kind of represent the...
I don't feel that that works.
So moved.
And the people who have to live around...
That's why we, because what it is...
Stephanie has made a motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded to continue this matter until the October meeting. It's a non-debatable motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed? It's unanimous, the matter is continued to October. Those of you who want to come in October are welcome to be here, and, and you can react to whatever the conditions are that have been recommended, and you'll hear whatever we decide to do at that particular point in time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Please.